Call to order the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Minutes for Thursday, April 7, 2022. We can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the true power of our justice, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Sewell, will you please call the roll?
President Ballerain.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
Trustee Marsh Azga.
Here.
Trustee Pollock.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Molina.
Here.
Also present, Village Clerk Sewell.
Thank you. Trustee Hannan is not able to be here with us tonight because of war conflict. First thing on the agenda tonight is the President's Report, and I only have one thing on my agenda, and that is the Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees; and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska; and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world; and whereas trees can reduce erosion of topsoil by wind and water, purify the air and water by reducing pollution, and create plant and wildlife diversity; and whereas trees have been shown to reduce crime, increase property value, reduce heating and cooling costs, and conserve energy; and whereas trees can beautify our parks and streets, improve the quality of our urban environment, and carry on the tradition planned by the inventive vision of Frederick Law Olmsted; and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are the source of joy and spiritual renewal; whereas the Village of Riverside plans to plant trees at Indian Gardens to celebrate -- Indian Gardens to celebrate as part of the Frederick Law Olmsted Society Work Day on April 30. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, Joseph Ballerain, Village President, proclaim the day of April 29, 2022, as Arbor Day in the Village of Riverside, and I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to gladden the heart and promote the protection and care of trees within our community and wood lawns. In witness hereof, I set my hand and affix the seal of the Village of Riverside this seventh day of April 2022. Thank you. Managers' report?
I do not have a report this evening.
Okay. Move on to resident comments for non-agenda items. Do I have any residents that would like to speak tonight? Okay, hearing none. Move on to the consent agenda. Several items on the consent agenda. Approve voucher list of bills, April 7, 2022. Approve the Village Board of Trustees Regular Meaning Minutes, March 17, 2022. Review and file Community Development, January 2022, monthly report. Review and file Police and Fire and Community Development, February 2022, monthly reports. Review and file TOD zoning code update Steering Committee Meaning Minutes, September 16, 2021, and October 18, 2021. Review and file Parks and Rec Board Meeting Minutes, January 31, 2022, and February 28, 2022. Review and file Historical Commission Meeting Minutes, February 21, 2022. Review and file Riverside TV Commission Regular Meaning Minutes, February 14, 2022. A resolution appointing a delegate, a delegate and an alternative representative, the Board of Directors of the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency. A resolution authorize the provision of commission cards for auxiliary police corps members and Brookfield Zoo police officers. A resolution authorizing revised emergency mutual aid agreement with the major case assistant team. A resolution authorizing the sale or disposal of personal property owned by the Village of Riverside. A motion to approve a special event application for the Riverside Junior Women's Charity Brew Fest to be held at Riverside Swim Club on April 23, 2022. A motion to approve a special events application for the Riverside Brookfield Junior High Cross Country Meet to be held at Indian Gardens on May 4, 2022. A motion to approve a special event application for St. Mary's Church Ultimate 80s Party to be held at the St. Mary's Paris Center, May 14, 2022. Motion to approve a special event application for the Riverside Township Lions Club Chicken Dinner to be held at the Riverside Presbyterian Church on May 15, 2022. A motion to approve a special application for the Riverside Public Works Department Household Hazard Disposal Recycling and Shredding Event to be held at the Public Works Building on May 21, 2022. A motion to approve a grievance settlement agreement regarding Christmas holiday pay between the Village of Riverside and the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Council Lodge Number 39. Do any of these items need to be removed? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion.
Motion made.
Motion by Mr. Gallegos, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Marsh Azga. Any further comments? Hearing none. Ethan, if you could please call the roll?
Trustee Evans.
Here, I mean, aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Azga.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Department Boards and Commission Reports. Is there any reports this evening? Okay, hearing none, let's move on to pending business. An update regarding the zoning ordinance amendments with regards to the accessory buildings. Francisco, if you could.
In October 2021, the Board of Trustees considered a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to amend sections of the zoning ordinance related to accessory buildings and home occupation. At that time, there was board support to modify and clarify some of the proposed language and return those modifications to planning and zoning for further consideration. The Board accepted Trustee Pollock's offer to act as the liaison to work with village staff on the project. Trustee Pollock and staff met several times through the fall of 2021 and early spring 2022 to discuss the proposed amendments and recommendations. Updates were shared with the Board in November and February. In summary, we've proceeded under the premise that the Board would like to consider amendments that would expand residents' ability to use accessory buildings, primarily garages, for additional uses beyond storage of vehicles and other household items. In particular, what amendments would be necessary to allow the use of an accessory building as a work from home office, a bonus room, hobby shop, and other activities typical of a single-family residential property? Redline draft amendments are attached, along with a memo from Trustee Pollock describing each recommendation. The redline draft amendments include the following amendments. Recommend changes to definitions of accessory buildings and accessory structures with the intent to clarify differing regulations for accessory structures and for accessory buildings. Expands permitted use of accessory structures. This is a primary consideration for the Board of Trustees and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Clarifies but does not change the permitted height of accessory buildings and allows plumbing in accessory buildings. Other items that are mentioned in Trustee Pollock's memo but not addressed specifically in the redline amendments include potential changes to maximum sidewall height for detached accessory buildings. This was previously mentioned as a necessary means to accommodate car lifts in detached garages. And home occupation regulations. At some point, it may be beneficial to consider existing home occupation regulations in light of the increase in people working from home. With the permission of the Village Board, staff is prepared to bring these recommendations to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review and subsequent public hearing for adoption of certain text amendments, and the memos are attached to provide a timeline of events and discussions related to this topic.
Thank you, Francisco. Doug, would you like to add anything before we?
Sure, I'll just add a point of emphasis. Francisco covered it, but I wanted to be very clear that the substantive amendment that we're considering here has to do with the use of accessory buildings. There are no substantive changes to the bulk regulations. In other words, we're not allowing accessory built -- this would not allow accessory buildings to be built bigger, would not allow them to be built closer to a property line or taller. It would just simply make it clear that you could use an accessory building for any accessory use activity typical of a single-family residence. Right now, the code implies or makes clear that some of that space, if not all of it, can only be used for storage. For example, we allow what I call a one-and-a-half-story garage or accessory building where you have one story and an attic with dormers, and the bulk regulations accommodate having actual livable space on that second floor or that half-story attic. But the code specifically says that you can only use that for storage. And this amendment focuses in on making it clear that, or changing that, to make it clear that you could use that as a home office, or you could use that as a playroom, as an art studio, personal art studio, whatever. And that is the crux of what we're looking at here. It's not a whole lot different from what planning and zoning had recommended before, but I think it's much clearer now and gets to the heart of the matter in terms of the use of accessory buildings. So, you know, the Board of Trustees previously indicated general support for proceeding with this, and we have been working with staff to prepare the redline draft you have before you. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I think what we're really looking for here is just simply direction to send this to Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing and their review and recommendations and comments.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work you did on this. Thank you, Francisco. Thank you, Ashley. Is there any questions from anyone? Go ahead.
Just a clarifying question. In the second bullet point of the memo, you speak to the 12% combined maximum. So there's a 12% combined maximum for detached accessory buildings with a maximum allowed size of 800 square feet per building. I just want to make sure I understand. Is the 800 square feet is per individual building? Or could you have two 800-square-feet accessory buildings, as long as you didn't exceed 12%?
I believe it's, if it doesn't exceed the combined 12%, is that?
But my understanding of the code as it is now is that it's either or, it's either 12% or 800 square feet, whichever is less. That's the code now. What you're, the bullet point you're reading is what the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended back in 2021.
To go to per building?
Right. So that the total area of accessory buildings cannot exceed 12%, and each individual building cannot exceed 800 square feet, and Ashley's nodding her head, so I think I got that right.
Thank you.
Trustee.
I have a question. The 18-foot height amendment, how practical is that with the use of larger-gainful garage doors? Garages on the first floor and then usable space on the second floor of accessory buildings?
Well, I call your attention to the graphic that was included with the redline amendments. And with an 18-foot peak, you could have, and a 12-foot sidewall, on a 24-by-24-foot garage, again, with 18-foot peak roof height, 12-foot sidewalls, and with dormers, you could have up to, you could have a 100-square-foot area in the attic that has a 7-foot ceiling clearance. So the answer to your question is, it is very practical, under the existing codes, to be able to use that attic space.
But I think your question is more, can the car get into the garage? And I think the answer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the answer would still be yes, because they ask it through the garage door.
Yeah.
You know, the.
Yeah, you know, most.
The Foley's truck.
Which could be a 10-foot door.
Right, this graphic is showing a 9-foot first floor for a garage, and 8-foot is the typical height of a garage door. You could go a little bit taller if you wanted. If you didn't, for example, if you had a larger passenger van or something, recreational vehicle, I don't know if we have a limit on the size of the garage door, the height of the garage door, but certainly you could go taller with the garage door if you needed to accommodate a larger vehicle.
Go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, I'd like to have a 10-foot height on the first one, and if you go into some, 7 feet on the second floor, and I'm 6'2", that is going to feel kind of claustrophobic for someone to work productively from home at that low level of a ceiling.
At 7 feet?
Mm-hmm.
That would require bulk code regula, a change in the building height. And if the consensus of the Board is you want planning and zoning to consider that, then that probably should be in your motion. I did not go there with what I, the work I did, because it was my sense that the focus was to be on the use, how it's used. And there seemed, I thought, and maybe I was wrong, I thought there was hesitation about increasing the bulk of a building, but if you think that's something that planning and zoning should look at, then that should be part of our motion.
On that, on that same graphic, you've drawn it as a dormer, but could someone, if they were constructing, say, constructing it new, could it just go straight up 18 feet? So it's.
Sidewall.
So the sidewall height is limited to that?
The sidewall height is limited to 12 feet, but what the code, and that's, I consider it a clarification. I suppose you could make an argument that it's a substantive amendment, but I think it's just a clarification. Right now, you can go up to 12 feet on sidewall, 18 feet at the peak. You can have a dormer, but the code does not tell you how far that dormer, does, you know, is the dormer 1 foot in from the 12-foot sidewall, or is it more? And the answer we came up with, that, the answer that I put into this redline amendment was that 45-degree angle, which is what we use for houses. You know, a house doesn't, has a maximum height limit, but it also says that there's this 45-degree plane that you cannot exceed. And so that, and the purpose of that is to maintain the integrity of the 12-foot sidewall, you've got to push that dormer in to let sunlight and air through. So by having that 45-degree angle, you're not impacting neighboring properties by increasing the mass of the building.
Is that in the ordinance about the 45-foot?
Yes, a 45-degree angle, yes, it's in there.
Do you have, in the graphic, the graphic is helpful, as a non-engineer who's trying to picture what this would look like if it were to proliferate around town. Do you have a gas at or an estimate at what the square footage of the new usable space would be based on these dimensions?
In this example, you would have a 12-by-12 room.
100.
With 7-foot clearance.
Gotcha.
Assuming the dormer's 12-foot deep. Actually, it could be bigger, because you could make the dormer more than 12 feet deep. I just, in this example, with the 45-degree angle and a 24-foot-wide garage, I'd be 12-by-12. And you could have a 30-foot wide garage, so you could go even bigger if you wanted to. And if you're worried about what it's look, would look like, I have photographs of garages all over town that are built to this code, and they look wonderful, in my opinion. I think they, they look better than a, they're kind of a mini coach house type of look.
Sure.
The one question that I, you know, that I was thinking about is, you know, I, is the sidewall height, and I get the 12-foot, but I don't know if there's a way we could, you know, you know, there is, you know, there is technology with lifts and a 12-foot, you know, I talked to a builder, and unless you're a collector of, you know, Corvettes and Ferraris, 12-foot is going to be a tough, tough to put, and I would rather us, you know, rather a resident buy a lift than build a wider garage. Is there, is, you know, he said we'd need at least another 2 feet.
Yeah, if, I think, if that's, again, I was just focused on the use.
Right.
Yeah, what do we need, what's the minimum amount we need to do to make sure that people can use this space productively, not just storage? If you wanted to look at increasing the building height, again, we would direct planning and zoning to do that, but my suggestion on a way that amendment would play out is that you could go more than 12 feet, as long as you respected that 45-degree angle. So in effect, what that means is that if you wanted to go 14 feet, instead of 5 feet from the side lot line, you'd have to be 8 feet from the side lot line. I don't know if those numbers are right, but as an example, in other words, you know, in order to make that sidewall taller, you need to get farther away from your neighbor's property. That would be the way I would think we'd go with that if we were to try to tackle that height restriction.
And could it be tied, could the sidewall height be tied to the use of the garage? So could we say the only way that we would allow you to have a 14-foot sidewall is you would, you would have to put in a lift and maintain a lift?
I think it's more of a legal question. I, as, you know, from a zoning administration point of view, I would not like that, because it just seems a little bit arbitrary, because what, you know, what we're regulating here is impact on the neighbor's property. And what, the only thing that impacts the neighbor's property is the height and the mass of that building. What's inside doesn't impact the neighbors. So to say if you, you know, it gets back to the plumbing issue that's in there too, similar issue, just because you have a pool, you could have a full bathroom, and how does that help the neighborhood? It doesn't. And I would argue the same thing about the lift.
And there is an issue, too. Even if you've built it that way and required a lift to be installed, what happens if someone doesn't want to use it or takes it out? What do you make them?
Take the garage down.
Take the garage down? I mean, you can't, it's just not practical, I think.
Okay, okay. Yes?
Okay. I just have a couple of comments and a question. First of all, I definitely appreciate all of the thought and work that went into this, and I understand that the emphasis of the way that you were approaching this was use-based. I also noted that there was a distinction that was made in the memo and the supporting materials between accessory structures under the old, you know, and existing code, and then a distinction between structures and buildings, where buildings are something that one goes inside, and structures are things like fences and patios and the things that you don't go inside. My only question and concern beyond what's been discussed before, which I think is great, has to do with the amendment of Section 1073 to make it pertaining to accessory buildings entirely rather than structures, and whether there is going to be any corresponding attention to, like, the existing sections of 1073, like Sections C, D, et cetera, that basically addressed accessory structures with prohibitions of having them in street yards, for example, and provisions that address how far accessory structures need to be located from lot lines and adjacent neighbors, and the primary structure. So by changing 1073 to only address accessory buildings and now not to address structures like fences, patios, pergolas, retaining walls, things like that, we, are we permanently removing prohibitions of having things like that in the street yards, number one, and permanently removing any kind of regulation as to how far those structures need to be from the neighbors or the primary structure?
The, the other sections of the code, B through O, I think, of this 1073, each subsection addresses different types of accessory structures. Driveways, for example, fences, swimming pools, et cetera. When you read all of, so all of that is covered with separate regulations, even as it is now, this Section A about accessory structures, it's clearly only meant for buildings. Otherwise, you would not be allowed to have a driveway to your house.
Okay.
Because it says accessory structures are not allowed in a street yard, period. But accessory structures are allowed in street yards. Sidewalks, driveways, things like that, maybe some other things, I don't know, but. So it was clear to me that the only way this could have been administered over the years is they read that as buildings, not structures. Otherwise, it just wouldn't make any sense.
Okay, all right. So with that clarification, there are a few remaining references in the draft to accessory structures. So those just need to be cleaned up. The title, first of all.
Right.
1073 accessory structures should be changed to accessory buildings.
1073 should be accessory structures, buildings, and uses.
Okay.
Because this 1073 also covers structures.
Okay. And then we had in Section A5, with respect to historical significance, any accessory structures is still remaining. Let's see where else. That may have been it. That may have been the two main things that I picked up.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just have one question. If we did allow it to go to a 20-foot height, would that change the requirement of a 12-foot sidewall then because of the 45-foot angle that we require at the roofline?
I didn't understand the question.
He was asking that if you raise the maximum building height to 20, does that automatically allow you a 14-foot sidewall?
Yeah. That would have an effect, right?
Well, you'd have to change, this red line doesn't allow that, so you'd have to change the red line, you'd have to change the sidewall height, and you'd have to change how that 45-degree angle is applied, because that doesn't exist right now for accessory buildings. That 45-degree angle does not, it only applies to the house, principal.
Right. And there's a specific sidewall maximum height that would have to be addressed. So it wouldn't automatically raise it to 14 if you take, say, the peak can be 20.
Okay.
Automatically, that would have to be done.
So currently, the code reads that there's a 12-foot sidewall, and then the maximum height is 16 feet. In the residential district, it's 18 feet to match the pitch of the house. And so you can match a roof pitch up to 18 feet at maximum height. And so if we were to clarify and just say altogether, the maximum height is 18 feet rather than the difference, you know, 16, 18, we just chose to make it that maximum of 18 feet to allow for these other construction considerations. So that's just one aspect. If there were to be changes in, say, a height of an accessory structure, there's additional questions that are coming before the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding other proposed text amendments related to the transit-oriented development changes that the board, again, will see. Right now, the maximum height proposed on that is 15 feet, and that would apply in business districts and other things. So that could, you know, in a business district, you might not, you know, you might expect to see a flat roof, for example, on something like a garage, but not necessarily in a residential district. So just further consideration or an explanation as to the height difference right now. It's 16 feet is the max unless your roof pitch is higher, in which you could match it up to 18 feet.
Yeah. Well, I'm just thinking about that seven-foot ceiling on the second floor, and that's just not comfortable for someone who's over six feet tall. It's going to be very, it's not going to give them the productivity workspace they're going to need. So I'd like to see the height of overall 20 feet in the residential zoned areas. Do you see any kind of motion on that? What's the point of all of that?
I think we need to find, well, we need to get a consensus from the board on what we, you know, I.
So in the issue, the issue here isn't, you don't need to decide if you're open to changing the bulk regulations. I think, as Trustee Pollock said, you need to include that you want the bulk regulations with respect to height considered. And you don't need to make that decision tonight. This language, just like you don't need to proofread this tonight, the key is whether the terms are sufficiently clear that it's worth sending it for a public hearing. If you want the bulk considerations considered and you want greater height to be considered, there should be a consensus for that. But you don't need to decide exactly what angle or what setback there is if you're not ready to. You can see how it plays out in the public hearing, and then as long as the notice is sufficient, you can tweak it when it comes before you.
I see how it's out for 20 foot.
Go ahead, Doug.
I just wanted to note, the seven-foot isn't an arbitrary number. That's the building code minimum clearance for a room, for an interior room. That's where that seven-foot comes from.
Minimum.
Minimum, right. So is, do we have, is there a consensus of the board that they want the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider additional bulk requirements? That would include heights over 18?
I don't concur with that, actually. I think that it's fine as it is. I think 18 feet is a good compromise between the public interests of having more space for, you know, your home office or your storage or whatever, and then the concerns with the neighboring properties. I think it strikes a reasonable balance to begin with, and I think, you know, we have instances in neighboring communities certainly, and, you know, to a lesser degree in Riverside, where we have things that just seem too large for the space, that we've overbuilt a bit. So I think we should keep it as is.
I would tend to agree. I've probably looked at more garages in the last six months than I ever have. And there's some big garages that were just built, and there looks like there's quite a bit of room in them. I haven't been able to visit any of them, but from the outside, they're, they look like they'd make a good, a nice home office, or workshop, or whatever. I know that the, I sent you all a article that was in the IML about remote workers. And, you know, I really think that even though it was more geared towards, you know, far-out communities, like farming communities, wherever, you know, trying to attract these businesses, I thought it had a lot of, you know, application to Riverside. We, you know, we are just in such a good spot to take advantage of this, where, you know, you're, you know, you have, you know, I have two boys, and both of my kids don't go into the office anymore. And, you know, some of them, they only go when they want to. So, I mean, if we can attract, you know, those young upward-mobile people to Riverside and, you know, with our housing stock, and if they knew that with, you know, an investment in their garage, they can get away from, you know, get away from the kids, get away from the family and have a quiet, I think it makes a very attractive statement for our community, and I think it would help attract some younger, some young people. I also feel that the notion that these things would be used as illegal apartments is, I just, you know, it's not, to do this as for a living space, A, you would never be able to get through the permitting process. I mean, you can't just add a sewer without anybody noticing it. And the cost, I think I shared this the last time I was listening to a PCC meeting from another village, it was cheaper for a person to put a third floor on his house than it was for him to put a second floor on his garage, just because of the heating, the air conditioning, the electrical, the sewer, and everything like that. So that doesn't concern me at all. So if I can have, I don't think we have enough consensus to raise the bulk to 20. Sorry.
Well, no, I understand that, but more to your point about making sure that Riverside is an attractive place for home buyers to purchase, someone's going to see a seven-foot workspace here and a eight-foot workspace elsewhere, it's more luxurious to have that kind of competitive workspace for them. But consensus of the board?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we only heard from a couple trustees on that matter, but I'll put in my two cents. I'm open to that. I have mixed feelings about it. I understand Trustee Marsh Ozga's concern. I would rather leave that out of this process and tackle that separately, because I think this process, what we're doing here with the use, is pretty important. And if we can just get that done and get that on the books, and then if we want to separately address other issues like that, I'm fine with that. That would be my preference.
Yes.
I agree with Trustee Pollock. I am open to exploring what another couple feet might look like, what, you know, some changes to the bulk may mean, but I think that the work done here is effective and has taken you a great deal of time, and I think it's most prudent probably to push forward with what we have here. I think we'll have a number of bites at the apple if there's consensus or feedback from planning and zoning or more community support for something like that, that I would be open to considering it in the future.
And I didn't say it so, but thanks for all your work on this one, Doug.
So do we have a consensus that we want to send this down as red line to the Planning and Zoning for the public hearing?
Do we want a motion or just consensus?
Do you have, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
You got it. Thank you. Thank you, again, Doug, thank you for all the work. Francisco, Ashley, thank you for all the work. Appreciate it. Second thing on our agenda is the landscape building contractor education and enforcement efforts. Ms. Monroe.
I stayed standing here. Thank you. So at the March 3 meeting, there was consensus from the Village Board to not, at this time, register contractors performing, one, maintenance services, snow plowing, general landscaping. And so the idea was to explore what kind of education and enforcement policies or procedures we would start with in order to just generally inform the community about what our policies and procedures are and have anyone performing work in the community know what those are. So provided in your memo, just a general overview of our approach. So we created some contractor sort of information sheets. We have one for contractors performing any kind of building services that they would traditionally register with the village. And then we have one separate for contractors performing those specialty kind of services that we wouldn't have register. We also prepared a very rough draft of kind of an information hang tag of some kind that our hope is to put that into translation as well, so we'd have an English and Spanish kind of double-sided educational material that as contractors are out doing work, you, we have our staff, you know, inspectors or community service officers noticing the work being done. Just as a introduction, we can provide them those materials and note the contractor's name or, you know, their company name. And then should we experience any current concern, I suppose, with how things are operated, they're parking on the wrong side of the street habitually, or they're performing work on days that they should not be, we can start to kind of address that in the same manner as we do with our registered contractors. And just by noting how many times that becomes a concern, we can start writing citations or go straight to a citation if it's really, you know, egregious in some way. But the idea is just to educate people and make sure that they are aware of our work, our requirements as they're working in town. So just any feedback would be helpful, and if we're on the right path, then we'll post it up on our website and start providing information to contractors as they come in the door.
Any questions? I have a couple. We, one is, you know, do not blow leaves, push snow, leave rock, dirt, or other debris in streets or drains. It might be nice to put in streets, drains, or neighboring properties, just so you don't blow your leaves on my lawn. You know, the other thing is, you know, 7 o'clock is, for a guy that doesn't wake up till 8:30, 7 o'clock is awfully early for grass cutting. I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but.
I was about to comment on that. We did, I did receive some resident feedback, at least on the time. I do want to recognize that a lot of this work takes place in the heat of the summer, and it gives those staff individuals a little bit more time in the earlier hours to do that. So that's where I came out on that.
I do have a comment on that as well.
Shoot.
I've received a number of resident comments when I was working the farmer's market last summer about the hours and noise related to these things. And it occurred to me that in light of the regional and, you know, national initiatives to reduce CO2 emissions, that it might be worth our while to relook at the timing on those ordinances and maybe encourage people who are, or encourage contractors that are using electric and quieter and non-CO2 emitting machinery to be able to work at those earlier hours. And if you use something that's gas-powered and noisy and is throwing a lot of, you know, CO2 into the atmosphere and creating, you know, a nuisance, you can't start until an hour later. And that could be our first step in moving towards, you know, more electric lawn maintenance equipment. It could be our first step into reducing emissions, et cetera, et cetera.
And as I see Director Tab looking at me, so Public Works starts at 7:00 a.m., and so while they are evaluating different battery-operated equipment, we do use gas-operated, and so if we were to change the code, it would have a direct impact on Public Works and overtime, because then it would push back their time when they can start their work.
It may also be challenging to enforce, I think.
Very much so.
Okay.
We're trying to improve our enforcement here, so I'm supportive of that, and I'm very supportive of reducing CO2 emissions. So I like the idea. I just think it might, at this juncture, be difficult to define with precision what's allowed and to communicate that.
I agree with Trustee Clarity. It might be challenging to enforce that. Again, I love the creativity of the idea, and I'm for it, but at the same time, it's going to be challenging for us to enforce at this time. If the time ordinances need to be looked at, we do also allow for raffees collection and recycling starting at 7:00. So we would have to.
Okay. That's good. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity to be more carrot than stick about it. If there's some, I just would encourage the staff to think about ways we can incentivize contractors or reduce permit fees, or if we get to a licensure stage, if this education program doesn't work or something like that, perhaps we can think of a way to encourage the desired behavior that may be a little bit easier to monitor as a slightly gentler first step.
First thing.
We need to start somewhere, I suppose.
Yeah, I'll echo Trustee Marsh Ozga's point just now. We can't just always come up with a reason why things won't work. We have to start looking for possibilities, ways to address the, our carbon footprint. And if we're just going to sit and dismiss it and just say, oh, it's going to be hard to regulate, or, you know, our own operations will be impacted without really taking a look and spending time talking about it, maybe with others, experts, or people who work in the area, we're sort of cutting our legs off at the knees. Just, I think we should spend a little bit more time, not today, maybe not today, but it should start to become a more regular part of our discussion when we're making, when we're talking, especially when we're talking about companies that use loud machinery or, you know, machinery that contributes to pollution. It should start being like a point of discussion.
I would agree. I think the only thing that I got lost in that conversation, and I like the idea, but how do we, how do we regulate, how do we regulate these contractors, but we have our own Public Works building that's working at the same time? So we have to, we have to balance these two.
So what it sounded like, though, is that, was that Manager Francis indicated that Public Works is already looking at that issue. They're just not, they're not in a position to make any decision now. So maybe you just, you know, you might want to look at what some other communities are doing. I mean, it started out as just a start time, but this idea about the emissions and the kind of equipment that's being used, there might be some more creative ideas that are out there, and maybe staff could look at that. You don't need to jump to it right away.
Trustee Pollock.
I would add on a concern, not just for Public Works, but for myself or residents who use that equipment. Now, I know we can probably say this only applies to contractors, but that, I don't care if it's a contractor or my neighbor with that loud machine, it affects me the same way. So if we wanted to reduce or eliminate that, it would affect residents too. And when they can do that work and what equipment they could use, so, you know, that would be my concern about that type of regulation is that inconsistency, unless we want to apply it to residents too.
Which I would not be adverse to.
Do we have a noise ordinance, though? I mean, do we have a, there's a limit on decibels in the time?
There is. So we updated the code a few years back when Director Apt was here, because as it related to residents, so homeowners doing work, actually, they were precluded from doing works on holidays or on Sunday, which obviously, we know that that's when a lot of residents do the work. And so as part of that discussion, the code was updated and modified to allow for residents to do certain work on weekends or holidays, but not contractors. And I kind of gestured Director Tab to walk up because he actually can provide an additional update and insight as it relates to battery-operated equipment and Public Works operations, because this has been something that has been on his radar. Certain residents have reached out and asked him about it, so I thought it was appropriate.
Yeah, so just a quick update. Last year, we started getting into the battery-powered realm, and primarily, it's been for weed whackers, leaf blowers, and recently, we obtained a battery-operated chainsaw. So we're starting to get into that as far as the, you know, I just want to put out that we cut 87 acres of grass a week, all summer, once a week. To find a machine that is capable of doing that battery-powered, we've yet to find, because that's run seven hours every day, you know, all summer. We're looking. There are options that I think are on the horizon, but from, for the bulk grass portion of it, we haven't found a machine that is capable of doing that yet. The Forest Reserve does use propane-powered, you know, rideable lawnmowers, but, you know, we try to keep our equipment as long as possible as opposed to doing a hard restart with a different technology at this point isn't, I don't think, fiscally responsible, so. But we are, we are looking, and as soon as it becomes available, we might entertain the option, maybe get a demo or something like that in-house for a while, but as of right now, we haven't found something.
And I think that would be the same problem that we would have with, you know, even a contractor. I mean, they're out from 7 to 8 o'clock, they're out for 12 hours. You know, how do they charge their batteries up, you know, during the day? I get where you're coming from, though. I think it'd be, it'd be great to be all green. We did talk a little bit about making them aware that when their merchandise, when their machinery isn't in use, just not to let it lay around and spew. I mean, that's kind of an, again, again, educational thing that, you know, when, you know, don't, please don't allow idling material, you know, machinery. I remember that was a comment we had last time.
Okay.
Yes.
I just, I just want to commend Public Works for being forward-thinking and looking for solutions. I would encourage you to continue to do that. I like the idea of trying to get our house in order as we start to push these out to residents and to contractors. I understand that the technology isn't quite there necessarily, but I personally would be supportive of looking for ways in the future to allocate budget to it if that's what we need. I understand sometimes these tools are more costly than the other tools, but I agree with Kristin, excuse me, Trustee Evans, that you need to start somewhere, and at some point, we have to make hard decisions, and so I am supportive of that.
Good. Thank you. Yes.
Do we have a carve-out for hiring snow removal contractors on Sundays or holidays after a big snowstorm? If not, that may be something we want to do in the future.
No, we do not.
Might as well make people legal, keep them legal.
And if we can just get the people to park their trucks on the right side of the street and not in the middle of the street would be a huge, huge benefit. So great, thank you for the work. If you could, any other things you'd like her to add on?
Yes, I noticed that there was not a particular reference or just a bullet point on when tree trimming is appropriate. Because I think a lot of residents unknowingly hire companies to trim their trees out of cycle or out of season and it is not healthy for the trees. So there is some information on the Village website, however, I think that is so convoluted, it takes too many clicks to get to the ultimate, you know, message that really the best time to do it is in the winter when the trees are dormant. So, you know, if there's a way to put that to the forefront, that would be very helpful.
I will connect with Forester Collins on the best way to succinctly communicate that in the materials. That's, that's very good. And I do have ideas about how to continue our green initiatives here. So as we, as I wrap up some other things, you'll hear more from me on that.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monroe.
Thank you.
Okay. We move on. A resolution revising policy for village sponsorship or support of special events. Director Johns.
Good evening. At the August 19th, 2021 board meeting, we discussed the special event application policy and procedures. Couple of things coming out of that conversation were the reimbursement for village services charged to the Parks and Rec Department, that language should be changed to the Village of Riverside, and decreasing the reimbursement rate from 120 to 100%. Also adding on the special event application, an alternate inclement weather date so the application wouldn't have to go back to the village board if canceled due to weather. Staff has reviewed the application in detail and is recommending a couple other adjustments to it. Among the greatest impact is a suggested change of the removal of the daily barricade fee of $1 per barricade and instead adding a $10 application fee to offset the missed barricade fee revenue and to adjust several of the prices to cover actual costs. We also bullet pointed a couple of the other clarifications that were made on the special event application before you tonight.
Okay. Is there any questions? Okay, hearing none. If I can have a motion?
Motion made.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Marshazga. Ethan?
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Move on to the last item on pending business is the discussion regarding the capital projects for the green spaces. Director Johns.
At the March 20, sorry, the March 3rd meeting, we discussed possible uses for the DCEO grant for green improvement spaces and that was decided to allocate that towards the annual tree contracts with D Ryan Tree and Landscaping. This grant has currently been submitted for and under review by DCEO. We also discussed several options of what this increased surplus could ultimately accomplish for the village in different green improvements and those options were brought back to the Parks and Rec Board. At the Parks and Rec March 21st, 2022 meeting, they suggested that athletic field improvements or creating an athletic field at Indian Gardens and the sidewalk access into Turtle and Big Ballpark be considered first. We wanted to bring this back to the board tonight to get direction on whether these improvements should be attempted to be accomplished in 2021 or, sorry, in 2022 or be presented with the 2023 annual budget.
Okay. Thank you. Trustees?
Do we have time to get them done for this year?
The sidewalk access could be bid with our sidewalk improvement program and we would have time to, to accomplish the athletic field this year if those two items were the direction of the board.
I'd like to get it done sooner than later.
If it's possible, it'd be nice to have the field for fall soccer.
Do we all agree that those two recommendations from the rec board are what we would prioritize?
We do not agree on both of them.
Okay. Then, please.
I will, you know, I, I am in favor of the improvements at the athletic fields at Indian Gardens. At the last meeting where this was considered, the March 3rd meeting, I did indicate that, you know, the pouring of concrete in green spaces is something that should not be undertaken lightly and that we had a wonderful outcome in the Swan Pond Park project when the expertise of the Landscape Advisory Commission and the Preservation Commission were considered in tandem with Parks and Rec and it was, it was a collaborative project with a beautiful, excellent result. I think the opportunity for that collaboration needs to be explored in all cases where we're talking about replacing green space with hardscape. I did pull up the GIS tree survey of the area where this concept of the Big Ballpark and Turtle Park project is outlined and it appears that the sidewalk goes through and will impact, depending on how wide it is, that is, whether it's six feet, eight feet or 10 feet wide, will definitely impact seven trees and possibly more equivalent in October 2021 dollars on the GIS survey to the tune of several thousand that would be removed or disrupted, having their root systems disrupted by the excavation of that space. And this is all without the, you know, walkthrough that would need to happen. So I am reluctant to allocate budget money right now to something that hasn't at least received some additional input and analysis. Is this too much concrete? Is the direction, you know, where it needs to be? I don't have that confidence, so I can't, I can't vote for that right now. I think it's an easier sell and it would be an easier sell with those commissions probably too, to tackle something of equivalent value like Patriots Park where there already is an existing path in place that's been degraded. So we know that trees would not be impacted by basically replacing an old path that isn't concrete with a concrete one because we know where those trees are and we know they won't be damaged. This doesn't have that same confidence level, so if we're being asked to make a budget allocation without the full commission input, I would be more inclined to substitute the Patriots Park project.
Dan, could you answer the tree question?
As to whether it would impact specific trees?
Because we're not, what's the width of the path? It's going to be, it's a sidewalk.
Five feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, five.
Yeah.
And what, what is the impact on the trees that are in the?
Until the site's surveyed, we don't even have a specific route. The drawing was by the engineering firm as a proposed suggested path, but it would be surveyed before the route would actually get laid out. You know, that's just an approximation.
Trustee Evans?
Well, I do support the Parks Board recommendation for the sidewalk connecting Turtle Park to the Big Ballpark. So I think they proposed a significant improvement to resolving a longstanding issue. But I do want to make sure that the trees are considered in the design. I agree with Trustee Marshazga that, you know, perhaps the sidewalk could meander around the bend there with, you know, minimizing impact to the trees. And I know Trustee Marshazga likes meandering sidewalks. And I also would request that the LAC and Preservation Commission review the, review the plan before we allocate the funds to the project. But yes, you know, that little curve, especially between long common and not all can get very congested in the summer with kids heading over to their sports and walkers and bikers and people in cars. It's like, it can be very crazy on many summer nights. So I do think that a sidewalk and crosswalk over there would be helpful.
A dedicated sidewalk, yeah, it would because there's cars that park there all the time.
Yes.
When the Big Ballpark, yes. So from a safety standpoint, I agree with you 100%.
I also would like to see, yes, improvements to the gravel path at Patriots Park. I'll never stop asking for that. Like if not a new sidewalk, then, you know, new grading and new gravel. And I also would be in support of an athletic field. That said, drainage is a constant problem for most of our fields and I'm assuming it will be an issue at that proposed location as well. So, you know, just, I just wonder if there's any idea of, you know, will, is it like a better position than our other fields? Are we going to have the same problems with that field as we have with all the other fields? Is that still, would it still be an enhancement to our, the number of parks we have if we can't use it because it's flooded all the time? You know what I'm saying?
Inevitably, we would fall under, you know, if it flooded because we can't add material to a floodway. So in a perfect world, we would crown that field. It would be higher than the rest of the surrounding area, but we can't do that in a floodway. But I would say that we had standing water out at Big Ballpark, we had standing water at Harrington. We're not immune to it really wherever we put the field. So I share your concerns. That area is prone to flooding since it's low, but it's really the only substantive area that we have with a parking lot access that we, that would provide more space for athletic activities.
I, I wanted to know, do you have any idea of what percentage of time during the summer that the parks are not usable because of flooding? Is it a lot of time during the summer or is it just more of a, not as big a problem as I, I think it is?
No, it's, I wouldn't say that it's substantial. It's, I would say that it doesn't really affect the playgrounds much, it's more the athletic fields. So when you're talking about baseball fields with a good amount of rain, that soil gets wet, so the soil and clay mixture, so that renders it not usable. So that could impact it. Standing water has collected at Indian Gardens, occasionally at Harrington Park, so that could affect it, but just judging by our activities and our sports leagues, it's not been a significant amount of time.
Okay. I still would wonder if we should start looking at strategies to address the drainage on our athletic fields and maybe see what others are doing to mitigate, maybe not just, you know, in our region, but maybe across the country to see how they're mitigating flooding and that's resulting from climate change. So I know that that's really what, what the, I think that's our main issue is climate change bringing more water. So I just think that that's another thing that we could start thinking about.
It's like crowning Harrington Park, the soccer field. Has that ever been raising?
The general, most of the field is higher than the surrounding area. If you've been out there, you'll see the general places of puddling or standing water would be the goal boxes and the area in between the soccer field and the playground, which is lower than the actual field. But if you, if you get a large amount of rain, like we did, ground not completely, you know, thought out yet, it just has nowhere to go and it pools up. But we could certainly look into adding material at Harrington. Indian Gardens is problematic because it's in a floodway.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And I have had preliminary talks with Little League regarding drainage, specifically at Harrington Park. There's above, one of the Little League fields there floods fairly consistently when we get heavy rains and Little League has raised money for special projects in the past such as the roofs on the dugouts. So that's something that we've discussed possibly targeting for in the next few years.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I, I, I think the Indian Gardens or the Turtle Park sidewalk is, is important. I mean, from a safety aspect, I mean, when we first built that park, you know, we were trying to do exactly what Trustee Marshazga said and that's to have a very low impact of concrete in the common because, you know, that Turtle Park is, was a touchy park for many, many years. So we wanted to be very, you know, very cognizant of that. So I, I, I have, I would like to see us do that, but is there a way that we could give you direction on what we feel is, if we come to a consensus that the Turtle Park sidewalk is something we want to do? Before it gets done, I have no problem with it going in front of LAC, but could we get a, a, some sort of survey done where we could know exactly the impact that it would have and how that would, how that would work before, before it went to LAC so they had, they have a full idea?
Yeah, we could work with our engineering firm and have a survey completed and a, an exact location proposed of the contour of the sidewalk as it, where to interweave the trees and work in conjunction with the forester and try to put the best product forward with the least impact. Just for clarification, the, the crush granite that is by Turtle Park is not part of this proposed project.
Right.
Just to make sure.
That stays the crush granite.
Right. It's just the northern periphery of the.
I, I see this sidewalk being very similar to the one that we really just, that was just put in along the Swim Club, you know, basically runs parallel to the street.
Yeah, that original proposal for the Swim Club one, it did parallel the contour of the curb and we had to amend it once we got the survey done and it does have a little bit of a contour towards either end of it. So it's, you know, again, it's just a drawing that the engineering firm did as a proposal, but we can allocate funds to do a survey and get a drawing done.
Okay. So we have, we have, we have six things on the list here, plus we, then we don't have to do anything either. I mean, that's the other thing. I mean, you could, you could, we can, we can keep the, keep the $100,000 and bank it till we get more ideas. So I'm looking for, I mean, I personally would, am, am, would be going towards the way of the Recreation Department with the caveat that we would have a proper engineering survey done to the Turtle Park area and I wouldn't have that, I wouldn't have a problem with LAC taking a look at it too. Trustee Pollak?
I agree.
Thank you.
I have a question on that.
Trustee Evans.
Well, well, since there was a question of confidence with concrete, would you prefer to have pavers instead? Can we find out what the, what the price of pavers would be?
They will be definitely more expensive. The maintenance of a paver versus an exposed aggregate sidewalk is exponentially more.
Do we know about how much more? Ballpark?
Twice.
Twice.
For, for me, it's an issue of the permanence of whatever it is involved. So it's, it's concrete, it's pavers. I would just like to know that the design is using the least expensive, not the least expensive, but the, the most efficient use of materials in the most aesthetically pleasing way. So that is a, that is something that the designers and the people who know where the, you know, the tree root systems go in relationship to the crown, you know, and have the ability to say, well, maybe, you know, the direct following of this curve, you know, causes this much damage, perhaps this route is better and makes more sense and we can make it look aesthetically pleasing. But you don't know that. I mean, we're being asked to budget money for something that we don't know is going to give us the right and best approach. So I'd rather have that input from the, with the commission's expertise on the front end before we make a determination with the budget.
Okay.
Correct, but we have to give them direction to, in order to get the survey done. So we're not going to have a survey done unless we have a consensus from the board that they're, they're interested in at least putting the sidewalk in. The other question is, could this, could this sidewalk be the grout, the crushed granite like we have in Turtle Park? I mean, that's been in there since 2000 and it's, it's worn, I think it's worn very.
Well, one of the reasons we're looking at replacing the crushed granite at Patriots Park is because of a maintenance issue. So I would be somewhat, you know. So I would be somewhat, you know, hesitant to install another maintenance issue.
I know, I'm a little, I'm wed to the crushed granite because we're the ones that put it there. I think it was, I think it was a great, I think it was a great compromise back then. But so, do we have a consensus of what I, that said, that we will, we, we agree with the soccer field? And that we agree that this approach of the Turtle Park safety enhancements are the direction we want to go, but we want to make sure that it is, it is properly surveyed with the, and with the, and the direction of LAC?
To that point, we are somewhat under the gun for bidding this project out in conjunction with our Selbourn Road Project and Sidewalk Replacement Program. If I contact the engineering firm and they were to conduct a survey and put a formal proposal on the table, and then bring it to LAC Preservation, and then back here, I don't know if we'll get it done by the end of June, when we're going to bid out.
When, when are you going to have the, when, when is, when would the, when would the cement be laid?
Fall.
So we just bid it out? We just always take it out, correct? We could bid out the square footage based on, based on this diagram. All you got to do is know how much feet to put in, and if it's more or less, it can always be adjusted in the contract or none at all. Am I, is that, am I making this too simple?
So the price is based on quantities. So if we put in, let's call it 20,000 additional square feet of sidewalk and elect not to do it, we might have a price issue.
So I was making it too simple.
So you're saying you want to put all three projects out for bid, because that brings the cost of the materials down?
Quantity scale, yeah. The Selbourn project is going to have concrete work done. Our annual sidewalk replacement program, we have X number of square feet. And I'd like to put this one, if we do it, I'd like to put it on there with everything else, just to get the best price.
I think there's a consensus that we want to do it. We just want to do it as, as thoughtfully and delicately as we possibly can. Am I, did I say that correctly?
I agree.
Okay.
So we would, yeah, right, we can put forth a, an approximate quantity and then decide at a later date the exact path.
The exact direction.
Right.
Because I think this is, would be a wonderful safety. Because when that ballpark is full and there's cars up and down that street, kids are running up, you know, between the cars and stuff like that. So this is, this is a wonderful idea and a great enhancement. I appreciate the Rec Department coming up with this. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
If I may, so there was, someone made mention of it going back to LAC to review. If we're treating this as a hardscape, it should also go to the Preservation Commission. So I just wanted to make note of that. The second piece is, for clarification for staff's purposes, in the code, it currently says that when we're doing certain items in the park, that it doesn't require that those additional pieces. And because the board has directed us a couple of occasions in the past, I would say 12 months, to bring it to LAC and Preservation, do we want to change the code just for continuity in how staff treat certain projects and review certain items? Just because it's easier for us to do that legwork in advance versus getting the feedback of the board and then us having to go back to the commission and come back? I'm just trying to figure out a way to streamline and make sure that consistency.
Are you saying to make a change so that we would be bound to do that?
Yes.
So that?
Yes.
So the reason we, we didn't do that before was, and we were actually more, more concerned with structures, playground equipment. We wanted, and it actually came about with Patriots Park. We wanted to be a little bit more out there with the, with the design. We wanted to do some colors that were different then. So we didn't want to get into the weeds with, with the LAC and Preservation. We, we just felt that the parks are a different type of thing. Which I still believe that recreation is, is different than, than, but what, but, I mean, this is not a structure. This is, this is actually a hardscape. Is that where?
Well, some people would consider probably a park structure hardscape.
It's an accessory.
So the one thing, the one thing you could do is if you did change the code to require the default for these things to go through those extra commissions, you could always waive it. In other words, staff could say, you know, there's a project which ordinarily would have to go through this and this, but time is of the essence, and we'd like to put it on the agenda to waive those extra things because we can meet this deadline. The board could waive it for a specific project. Just like you can, now that the default is not to go there, you can override it and send, decide to send specific ones to those commissions if you want. This would just flip it, but you could always waive it if time was of the essence. But then staff would ordinarily think, oh, we have to allow, they have to go through these in order to bring it to the board. That's the difference.
Or, or we could just do it the way we're doing it. Yes. And that's, and that's when it comes to a particular item that we feel is, would, would, would be beneficial by granting to the commissions, we could then do, that would be my favor, is to do as we're doing now. Yes.
I agree with President Ballerine. I think the existing collaboration is positive and is working, and I would rather not explore making it more rigorous.
Any questions? Yes.
Is it problematic somehow?
No, I, I just, you know, it just, you know, we like to go through a certain process to make everything nice and organized when presenting to the board, and so it's kind of out of order for us. And so if we would have known, well, we probably can still fit this on the LAC Commission meeting, possibly.
I can do, yeah, my agenda's due tomorrow, but without a survey and kind of design, there's not much to talk about.
Right. Then you could, I mean, you, they, yeah, I don't think, yeah. I don't think it has to be done this week, but, you know, but you'd, you'd have the design and, and survey and within their next, their May or June meeting, so.
And Preservation meets, so certain commissions meet every other month, and so that can prove to be challenging. And so when we have different items that we're aware that, whether it's a text amendment, we can kind of figure out, okay, where does that lie on different schedules and stuff so that we have everything ready for board discussion in totality? And so that, that's really the reason for the question, is we just want to make sure that whatever the expectation of the board is of following certain processes, that we're doing it. Versus it coming up one-off on certain projects.
Yeah, I, I would be in favor of the, you know, more regular codification of an involvement with the commissions. Because, you know, hardscape is what hardscape is, and if we're going to carve out exceptions, it could be for, you know, the particular playground equipment, it could, you know, I mean, but, I mean, there have been a lot of requests and things for hardscape during my short tenure, short tenure on the board. And it just seems to me that, you know, this kind of input is helpful on the front end.
And so an example of where we didn't get approval from Preservation or LAC, or at least I'm 95% certain, is when the board directed that they wanted the sidewalk installed at the Swim Club. That was supervised by staff, that was managed by staff and coordinated. And so that, there's the other piece of, you know, just trying to be as consistent as possible with how we're treating different projects.
And the other one we didn't go through was the fence, when we put the fence up quick, you know, the, along the thing.
Correct.
I, I would rather keep things the way they are, myself, but.
Okay.
Do I have a, do I, I need, I need head nods if we want to start looking at changing that ordinance. I think I heard from Megan, and I heard from Aberdeen.
Oh, the way it is now, I believe, empower press migration to make decisions on their own purview. And if we feel that we want other input from other commissions, we can simply do that.
Ms. Evans?
I tend to rely on the input from the commissions, so I'll just go with Aberdeen's request.
Mr. Pollock?
I would like to see us follow the normal procedure. I'm not sure I understand exactly the differences you're talking about here, but whatever our normal procedure is, that's what we should follow. I think, and I'm more concerned about getting it done right than getting it done this year.
Okay.
So our procedure, we're deviating from what's codified currently. Because what's codified is it just goes to the Parks and Rec Board and that's it, because it's in park space.
But we still have the, I mean, we are following procedure because we have the ability as the board to ask for LAC or Preservation, which we've done a dozen times in our year.
And I think this is a good example, because we have trees involved, and there's, there's, it's, there's going to be, you know, I think it's a good, I think this is a good example of something that we would, we would look for at least LAC's approval or input on. So I think that's, I believe that's the direction we have. That we, we will concur with the Parks and Rec Board on their two proposals. And you can bid this out, and please bring a survey and, and whatever to LAC for their input.
And Preservation.
Preservation.
Okay. If they, if they were to not recommend it, what would the, we'd still, by that point, I believe the Preservation's June 9th, which then would come to the next board meeting. If we have to in June, would be the second one. That's cutting it close on our, our bid date, so. I don't, I don't know how they're going to view this. I just always looking for, you know, what if?
Would it be possible if you need to include something of that approximate value for the bid purposes to put in Patriots Park as an alternate if the Preservation or LAC were not to recommend or were to have substantial modifications to the design?
The quantities are similar, so.
So if the quantities are similar, could they be swapped out for bid purposes and Patriots Park be done this year?
Or, or sidewalk, just 20, if this is 35 feet or whatever. And for some reason, which I can't see Preservation and LAC being against this other than the fact that it may disturb, disturb too many trees. But if this, for some reason, gets waylaid, could we just substitute 30 feet of sidewalk?
Sure, absolutely.
That's, I think that's, that's a win-win.
Perfect.
Della Plain, South Della Plain, needs a new sidewalk. But, thank you. All right, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Karen, do you got everything you need?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, new business. A resolution authorizing the execution of a license agreement for non-exclusive use of public property, the train station, and the use of Gears to You. Ms. Monroe?
Hi, good evening again. So we're excited to, to bring this opportunity to, before the board this evening. We had the, I guess, Lucky Fortune late in last year. We started talking with a group that was interested in use of the kitchen area of the train station that did not go forward. But early in the year, we were approached by a couple of, of different interested businesses with varied ideas for how to use that space. Eventually, after much discussion and deliberation, ended up landing on a non-exclusive licensing to Gears to You. It's a, a new, new-ish business. You, you can explain your history and explain exactly what you do. But it's a bicycle repair shop that would be located inside of the train station on the eastern, kind of, access from the eastern portico. People can access it from inside that door. It's currently locked, but when they're operational, the people will be able to find Gears to You in that space. They are also planning on renting bicycles, which is for Riverside visitors or, or residents, an opportunity to recreate throughout our community, use our Rails to Trails kinds of connections, and, and do those sorts of, sorts of things. They are active in the community and our region in providing education and services, and they're anticipating participation in Riverside events as well. So the agreement you see before you is, is where we landed. It would be a month-to-month licensing and allow for use of the train station if there were to be a special event, for instance, like Olmsted's birthday planned in that space. And as long as we're coordinating with Gears to You, and they're either participating in, in those types of events or, or need to make other arrangements for that one day, for instance, we have the ability to, to coordinate that with them. So there's information in your package explaining exactly what they do, but I'd like to introduce them and just have them say a, a word or two about their idea. If you have any questions, you're more than welcome to ask them or, or myself. Thank you.
I guess I'm dressed for the podium. Anyway. Peter and I both, we are, we are both halves of Gears to You. Mobile bicycle repair shop, soon to be stationary as well, hopefully. And we just, this was born of idle conversation during the depths of COVID in a socially responsible get-together we had in our driveway in a fire pit, saying like, wow, it would be great if we could have a bike repair shop Riverside. That would be just, just wonderful. And well, here we are, one or two years later. I kind of lost track of time. But we both have a, kind of a deep passion for, for bicycles and, and many things two-wheeled. And we really wanted to kind of spread the, the joy of that. And Riverside is, I don't know if any of you thought this, but I just think it's perfectly designed and built for bicycles. Everything just seems to kind of work out just right, and it's, it's pure riding pleasure. It's unlike anyplace else in Chicago, Chicago land, I should say. So I just, I just, I just love touring around the neighborhood and just think everybody else should, too. And I noticed, you know, we have so many bicycle-riding denizens in Riverside, and we should, we should, of all the suburban areas, I think, have a little shop that caters to mostly Riverside. So Pete and I are the, both local, Groveland residents, right on the lovely waterfront there. And we are pleased as punch to be serving our community and doing something that's hopefully good for our community as well. And yeah, the, the bicycle rental was an addition that we had not received, but I think it fitted in really well with our overall designs of world domination and bicycle riding. So we were happy to add that to our, our offerings. And I think having a train station as a kind of, you know, and a bicycle shop as an intermodal kind of area, I think is, you know, with all the trails involved around here and, and the zoo included, it's just, seems like a natural fit. And I am, I'm, I'm really pleased Riverside has kind of seen it fit to have us in their, in their warm embrace. Pete, Pete is wearing something from our, our spring collection. This is what we'll be dressed in as we're working on your bicycles. Not this.
I just, I just want to thank all of you for just the consideration of all of this. Riverside is, is actually the perfect community for all of this. There's just so many, there's so many cyclists that go through here. You're, you're at one end of both trails here. It's a, it's a thorough, it's a, so many guys, so many people go through here, you know, as we go ride bikes here, you know. I just see, now that I've been working in this business, in this, this town, this village for a year now, almost a year, is just, just being embraced by so many great people, meeting so many great people, and, and, and just being able to do that. It's, it's been great for me is just to be able to, that's, I think, the biggest thing, the, the best thing so far, is just all the different people I've met in the village and seen how many people, the common, the common, commonality of a bicycle, you know. And, and with rentals, it'd be great. We're getting tandems, too, so you guys can pair up. I don't know how you guys want to do that, but go ahead. So I just, again, I just want to thank you, and any questions, let us know. Thanks.
Does anybody have any questions for the Gears guy?
Nope.
The click and clack. For those that remember NP.
John Paul, but, you know, it's hard to tell which one is which, so, yeah.
I'm, I'm excited. You know, we, we actually had a meeting here Tuesday, with some other, some other communities where we're talking about the tour in February and, or in October. And, you know, we shared that you guys were coming, and they were really excited. So we actually changed the start of our tour de proviso from downtown to the train station.
Oh.
So you could be part of getting us all, you know, making sure everyone's. So you could be part of getting us all, you know, making sure everyone's good and everything like that. And so be a good, good advertisement for you. So I'm excited.
Fantastic.
Kind of on that, I've, I'm, I'm sure a lot of you already know, there's a, there's an organization in Brookfield called Cycle Brookfield. And what they are, it's a nonprofit organization. Really, it's just for promoting bicycles and, and, and the community. And they've done a great job in, in Brookfield. And so I've set it up with them. I'm, I'm good friends with the, the president and some of the people in it. So their next ride and, and the last, or the first Friday of every month, they have a ride that goes in different ways. It's about, about six miles. It goes around Brookfield. So on their next ride, they're actually going to cross over First Avenue, come into Riverside to the station and then back out. So they're kind of just promoting even more, outlining villages besides ourselves, so it'll be great.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Like to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve this.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second. I'm sorry.
One second, just for clarification and for the, the legalese. We handed out a revised version of the agreement just, and the only changes to that agreement from the one that's in the packet is the inclusion of BNSF and CRD in the sections 20, 21, and 22 about indemnification and insurance.
And insurance, right.
Thank you. Sorry.
That's okay.
My motion stands.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Clarity. Any other comments? Hearing none. Ethan?
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you. Thank you for your patience. It's been a long time since we've, it's been a long time since January.
And thanks to Ashley for helping us navigate this. Huge help. Thank you all very much.
Ashley is special. Second thing is an ordinance amending the village code of the Village of Riverside relative to outdoor cafes. Ms. Johns.
Hello again. Before you tonight is an ordinance amending the, the village code relative to outdoor cafes. This section of the code was created on May 2nd, 2019. And quickly then the pandemic followed in which outdoor cafe fees were removed, were waived in 2020. And on July 15th of 2021, the village board authorized waiving certain fees, including outdoor cafe permit fees for new businesses. Since this is a relatively new fee and has not been consistently applied since creating it, one of the things the Economic Development Commission recently discussed was removing the $25 annual fee.
Okay. Any questions? Any comments?
Comment. It's a side note. I'm fine with the ordinance, but it made me think of something I've been intending to bring up. I'd like to see if the boards in concurrence, I'd like to see the village look at our standards for outdoor cafes, particularly design standards. To have a more polished look required than, than what, what we currently have on the books. Particularly in open railing, open fence as opposed to an enclosed solid.
Very good, very good point.
Whenever, you know, that's appropriate to bring up, I'd like to see that brought up, but otherwise I'm fine with the ordinance.
I can actually comment on an appropriate time to do that. We, at the last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, were talking about the, again, the transit-oriented development zoning code updates. And there is plan to be more discussion on business district, especially as it pertains to anything placed on a corner or corner dining option. So it would probably be an opportune time to address that in the upcoming meeting and then forthcoming text amendments. So we'll, we'll pay attention to that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Do I need a motion in a second?
Motion made.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second. Second by Trustee Marshazga. Ethan?
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Last thing tonight is the discussion regarding the new parking lot and parking spaces. Director Johns.
In the recent, in the past several recent months, the village has acquired a parking lot at 3320 South Harlem as well as additional spots in Lot 8. Tonight, I wanted to discuss a little bit with the board, so getting some direction on what they would like to see in those spaces. So first, we could discuss the 3320 South Harlem Avenue property lot. Staff came up, this lot has this potential for 23 parking spaces, including 19 standard spaces and two ADA accessible spaces if used for parking. The options presented before you tonight are quarterly commuter or 24-hour parking, an hourly parking, business parking, or potentially selling the lot, or for use for Amazon lockers. Would the board like me to expand on any of these options?
One additional bullet point that's somewhat implied but not specifically laid out is another option would be to lease certain spots, whether it's to property owners that have tenants for guaranteed spaces, which we've never done in the past, but I wanted to outline that as a potential option. And that would be applicable whether it's for 3320 South Harlem Avenue parking lot or for the parking spaces along the BNSF line in Lot 8.
I have a question. Is there, is there, is there, can you do both? From a metered parking and a, and a leased parking? So can we take, you know, so many spots, maybe the spots along the wall and make those, you know, overnight 24-hour parking and then the spots in the middle, those are the ones that are going to be more to, because there is a need for business parking in that area. I just, I don't know how many and I'd hate to, to throw a whole parking lot at it.
So we do have the Green Parking Lot on East Burlington. There are certain spots noted within the village code that can be allocated. So they're kind of flex spaces, to be perfectly honest, where we can allocate it towards commuters. But the, the majority of that lot is for business-related parking and customers slash visitors to Riverside. So I don't want to be presumptuous, so I'll turn to Attorney Molina just to confirm that we can segment a parking lot to allocate different spaces and just produce signage appropriately to allocate those spaces.
Yes, legally, legally you have the flexibility to do that. Enforcement, you know, is an issue. You, you have, there'd have to be sufficient ability for the enforcers to know which are which. So you want to do it as simply as possible because they'll be issuing citations for people that don't follow it.
So we have right now, if I wanted to park in the Green Parking Lot for two hours, I, this is, I'm sorry, I don't know this, but how do I pay?
In the Green Parking Lot for two hours? So that is business parking, so you, there is no cost associated with it. So along the BNSF line are the few spots that were allocated several years back for kind of commuters that couldn't get spots, whether it was in some of the other lots, they had that option. And so those are, would only be permitted, so they would have to have a sticker in order to park in those specific allocated spots. Otherwise, if you're going into Riverside Foods and you decide to park in that lot, you're fine. Yes.
I, I mean, I just don't, because of its, so its proximity to the, to the, to the train station, I mean, it's, it's a perfect commuter lot. And I just don't want to see us leasing, you know, a dozen spots, leaving a dozen spots for the businesses on Harlem, but those dozen spots are used, are going to be used by people that just park there and go downtown. So I mean, that's, and that's, that's up to enforcement. I get that, but.
Right. And our CSO and our officers have been really great about some, sometimes a little too great because I'll get calls of, wow, you're doing a lot of enforcement in, in these particular areas. And so they've done a really great job of making sure that people aren't parking for extended periods of time, that if they're utilizing it for to patronize businesses, that they're actually using it for that purpose and not hopping on the train and trying to avoid paying the fee.
So am I correct that there's 24 spots? If I counted correctly, 14 down the middle and 10 at this, 10 against the wall?
We would have to re-stripe it, which Public Works could do at minimal costs. And that was identified as 23. We would need two ADA accessible spots in that count. As far as metered parking, we do have that option in Parking Lot 1 in the extension behind the Swim Club. We do have a pay station at the train station, which also could be installed at, in this lot if that was the direction of the board, or you can pay online or via an app.
Yes.
I have a question regarding the space required by the Amazon lockers. If we were going to do a combination of uses on Harlem, which would include both the Amazon lockers, which I understand would generate an incredible sales tax boon to the village and would also be, you know, have the plus of being visible to the commuters that take the train from the Harlem Avenue stop. How much space is required for those and how much residual parking would we have to play with?
I believe the Amazon lockers can somewhat be scaled to our desires on how much space we want allocated. In, in my design, if Amazon lockers were extended there in the previous drive-through lane, they would be placed there. So they'd be, people would be able to drive through where that previous.
Where the ATM used to be?
Yes.
Okay. Makes sense.
They would be there, so you could drive through. Also, that would be the perfect spot for a pay station if we wanted to accept cash for metered spots. So we might need to play with that option a little bit.
So would you still be able to get 23 spots?
Right.
That would not affect the spots? Yeah, I believe it would be able to fit where that ATM was.
Oh, nice. Okay.
On that little concrete.
Mr. Pollak?
I'm struggling with this because I just feel like we, we really don't have enough information. Is there any way to assess demand, I mean, other than just speculating? Or how much people would pay for these parking spaces and?
So we do know there's a business demand because we.
But what is that demand?
So the salon and, you know, we, we've gotten feedback from the salon over on East Burlington, closest to Harlem. And I'm sorry, but the, the name of the salon is escaping me at the moment. And their challenge was, you know, both for employee parking, because there's limitations on the street. And there is no, the employee business parking is within the central business district. And so that's, that's quite a distance from Harlem Avenue. And so there's been feedback on that and also for patrons that are there for extended periods of time, getting multiple services done. And so while I don't have that exact quantity of what that feedback is, that's just based on emails and telephone communication that I've had with some of those businesses.
Part of me wants to just put it on the open market and see who the highest bidder is. Who wants it the most and who's willing to pay the most. Amazon lockers to me seems like a great idea because that's, that's.
We would not have to relinquish ownership to do that.
Right, right. And, and of course, we'd, we'd want to see what they look like. I have no, no idea what, you know, how attractive they can be made.
They're not necessarily attractive. There's, they're metal boxes and they say Amazon on them.
Yeah.
I saw one at.
Well, there's always ways, there's always ways.
Ways to make them better.
You have to see what their name, they all have weird names.
I have seen some on different college campuses, which have, had the college colors and logos on it. So I believe they might be amenable to this. Just to explain a little bit about the process of getting Amazon lockers. I have put in a request with Amazon to see if they'd be interested in different spaces around town. They will send a person out unscheduled to meet with me and ask for pictures of said locations. At that time, I wasn't able to give him exact directions to any spaces. They are unable to provide any contact information for me to follow up with an individual. So he will return someday.
Finally Comcast.
Yes, at least they give a four-hour window.
I mean, I, I think our consensus is, if I'm speaking, if I'm speaking out of turn, that we want to maintain this as a parking lot. We just want to figure out the proper combination between business parking and, and, and leased parking. Now, if we'd, if we, if the salon wanted three spots, they would, they would, they would purchase three, three long terms, or three.
Therein lies the question. Are we offering business parking, which we do in the central business district and we do not charge? If we're, if, if we're saying a property owner, whether it's business or someone that owns a multifamily building, let's say, saying, I want to lease X amount of spaces in the village's parking lot. Those are the two different things where they're providing exclusive use of those spaces versus these spaces are open to everyone during these particular hours and you can only be parked there for three to.
Two to three hours.
Yeah.
I, I personally would think we want to do a combination of both. I just don't know what that combination is. We'd want to, we want to, we want to lease, we want to, we want to maintain, we want to get as much revenue as we can out of this parking lot. But we also want to be business-friendly to the people that are coming to Riverside to go to the salon or go to wherever and pay and move on.
So if the consensus of the board is we want to kind of create a hybrid of commuter and, and business parking and possibly 24-hour parking, we can put that information out there, maybe allocate minimally X amount of spaces for these different uses. If all of a sudden we're seeing a huge waitlist for commuter parking, then we can engage additionally in that discussion and bring back to the board of, you know, we've got this waitlist of 15 people that want parking spaces in the lot on Harlem Avenue. And the board can decide based on that how they want to adjust it. Question for Attorney Molina that has been presented to me by a board member is can we charge a different rate for that lot versus our other lots? Obviously, it would require a code modification, but.
So there, there is a limitation on the commuter spaces because Metro may have certain requirements on parking fees. But as far as the ones that are not commuter, you can have different, different rates.
Why would any of them be, it's our lot. Why would?
There, there, we have to look at. I just need to double-check the, the Metro.
The BNSF agreement.
Yes, I would need to double-check. Some, sometimes those affect commuter rates or try to limit. I, we just need to check it. I'm not saying you can't, but I know that if it's non-commuter related, it's kind of a free market. You know, if there's greater demand, you can charge more.
And I would assume that, you, somewhere in here says you have 22 people on the waiting list for the spots right here?
That is for Lot 8, so.
And those are commuter people or those are 20? I would assume that once those spots are, once this becomes open, a lot of those 22 are going to head down there.
That could quite possibly be because that zone in Burlington is, yes.
It's a, yeah, that's where I would go. Okay, go ahead.
I, I just, I think we've discussed this before, but I want to make sure I understand that this lot is too small or otherwise undesirable to be very marketable for development. That could generate revenue greater than Amazon lockers.
So it's a quarter acre, so there are limitations on what you can put on it. That doesn't necessarily preclude us from marketing it. I think from my perspective, if we're going to say we're marketing it, then if we're leasing out or permitting the spaces, telling, doing full disclosure to those individuals that we're still going to list the property, but it's guaranteed to you for at least this next quarter. That may lose its desirability because if they have a sure spot in Lot 8, they may not want to roll that dice and lose that spot in Lot 8 to potentially be punted from the Harlem Avenue lot and then have to restart the process because Lot 8 is very popular.
And in the un, however unlikely event that we're approached by someone who has a use for that space, you know, is it, if we're talking about leasing, can we build in a, you know, six months or a year or so? I just, I don't know how that works, but I, I, I understand. can we build in a, you know, six months or a year or so? I just, I don't know how that works, but I, I, I understand the need for parking. I just want to promote development and I don't want to.
You want to keep your options open.
I want to keep my options open.
We can, so let me work with staff. So if I'm correct in what I'm hearing is, let's come up at least with a plan for the next quarter. There could be interest from, once business owners hear about these additional spaces being available, there could be interest on leasing different spaces. Perhaps there could be additional development in the queue where maybe it's desirable for those different business owners then to lease spaces from us. And then we can talk about those different types of agreements. If there's any development within that business district area, there's going to be the need for a parking lot ultimately because there's not, all it is is on-street parking. Bank of America had a great lot and we're very fortunate to now own it. They have enough parking to suit the needs for Sherwin-Williams, and so it's, you know, what's going to happen on either of those two sides on East Burlington? And how can we make sure that there's sufficient parking for, to make sure that those, those businesses thrive?
So a developer that may be looking at that area does have the capability of having parking?
Right.
I think that's important. And plus, if I'm, I don't know where I heard this, and is, that would be a very difficult marketable street because I don't believe you can get a curb cut on Harlem that close to the railroad tracks?
Yeah, well, to get a curb, well, to get a curb cut on a state highway like that, even without the railroad tracks, is almost impossible now to get another one, a new one.
Okay.
And, and we have met with a couple of developers looking at that site specifically that have decided to look at alternative locations because of where the curb cut is on East Burlington. So it seems, at this point in time, given all the information that we have as staff, that would behoove us to utilize as a parking lot, but still keep our options open because when we get potential new businesses or developers that reach out, they'll ask, you know, what are some of the viable sites? And we can tell them some of the, the benefits and drawbacks of that site. But hopefully by having that parking lot, it makes some of those other buildings marketable for development.
And the curb cut is the two-year process, two-year-plus process that we've talked about in the past?
I, so the curb cut may not even work out because of where the traffic signals are for the railroad and also for East Burlington. And so I don't know that, while it is a two-plus-year process, I don't know that, that would, that they would even allow it, because usually.
Probably not, probably not. Part of the problem is Harlem is this main state artery, and it's really kind of narrow for what it is because of when it was built up. And so I just doesn't like, they hate interrupting the flow of traffic any more than it's already interrupted. They just hate it.
Thank you.
All right. So I think we have a consensus that we want to at least keep, continue to explore this as a parking lot and for you to work out.
So first step will be, we'll, we'll come back to the board and give them an update of how many spots we'll designate for commuters, business, and see any other feedback that we've received from the community between now and then. But we'll work on restriping it to make sure that it can start to be utilized as a village-owned parking lot.
Sure. Now we move on to the next parking lot.
Sorry, was there also consensus to market this as a spot for Amazon lockers?
Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
Good luck.
Yeah.
And we're staying with status quo as it currently stands for the fee structure, but we will double back with the board in case there's any flexibility on charging.
More.
Different, yes, more.
Okay, Lot Eight.
Lot Eight. The village has now obtained twelve additional parking spots in Lot Eight during, due to the approval of the agreement with First American Bank. The options there are again quarterly commuter parking, business parking, long-term lease of the site. This, I just want to make a quick amendment here. I do not believe this would be able for sale due to the spots along the tracks being BNSF right-of-way property. So I am amending that to a long-term lease proposition, or again, potentially Amazon lockers. EDC has identified having Amazon lockers somewhere in the downtown Central Business District, close to the railroad station and along Harlem to be desirable.
I, I personally think that Amazon lockers would be great in that little information booth that we have at the train station. It's open on both ends.
Visitor Center?
Visitor Center.
Out of the elements, I know there's some other ideas about that, but that's something I think, go ahead.
I had a discussion with Jennifer Fournier earlier this afternoon about those Amazon lockers and where in the Central Business District EDC was considering them. And they wanted to make them accessible to multifamily housing. And so she said possibly somewhere like down by the train platform, possibly near the barber shop. But she didn't say, you know, that's an idea too, that information center. But also possibly further down on Pine. But I think that was where the Economic Development Commission was thinking of doing.
We also had that parking lot behind the police fire station, too.
Yeah, down there.
Did you have something? Go ahead.
Yeah, I do have some questions about Lot Eight. And I'm sorry I didn't connect with you earlier, Director Johns. I know, I, I, I know you tried. So I wondered if the contract for the bank spots has been finalized? Is that done?
That we have them back?
We had it approved. I am still working on clarification for the signing on it based on the request for slightly limiting the hours on it. And they haven't given me a final answer on that. But the agreement was fully approved and executed at the last board meeting.
Okay, could you remind me if the spots are assigned in the contract? Because I see that we've given them the five prime spots across from the retail on Quincy.
They have not been fully assigned at this time due to signage. It says they get five spots in that area. The idea, the, the five spots along the tracks are definitely the most desirable for commuters versus the kind of turnaround. So that's why this was developed this way, but there is still flexibility in which spots we, we assign to them.
Yeah, the spots along the east side where they're, where they're not slanted, where I assume we're going to be, like, make spots for customers or staff. It makes them easily accessible from the street versus having to enter on the west side to enter the slanted spots. And so the, the spots on the east side make them prime spots for customers like the distillery in Higgins Glass. So I would, I would prefer having those five spots moved preferably to the back.
Okay.
And I was wondering if those five spots are for bank staff or are they for patrons?
They are reserved for First American Bank parking.
Okay, so it could be used by anyone?
That's going to the bank.
That's going to the bank.
Okay. And do we know what the hours of the spots are? I know we talked about reducing.
I have not heard final clarification on that yet, but it will be printed on the signage.
Okay, just, I know that the bank is open like nine to three or something, and they, they, they wanted it from eight to five, like a much longer amount of time than what the bank hours were?
In my conversations with the bank, they have currently reduced their hours due to COVID. And they don't know if those will be ramped up. So that is their hesitancy and what they are working through. That those hours may be expanded again.
Okay, so the nine to three is COVID hours?
That is what was explained to me.
And so what will the signage say? Do you have any idea? And what signage is planned for the east entrance?
The, the signage for the First American Bank spots?
Yeah.
Reserved for First American Bank from this time to this time.
And then, okay, so, so what will the signage say for the east entrance? Because that's what will tell people, you can park here, you can park in any of these spots. I mean, if we can move the spots to the back, it's not really as much of a, it's not really as important. You know, what the, what the signs say, I don't really need to know right now if they're moved into the back. But I do want to, I want some better signage than what we have now to, so that people really know that it's a parking lot that you can park in. Because I think now it's pretty confusing. I can't remember what it says, but it just talks about bank and permit parking. And so one of the frustrations that Mr. Rancini had expressed was that, that people don't know that they can park there and parking, he feels that parking is limited over there. So we don't want to, we want to like, you know, encourage people to park there with some good signage.
So once we have the guidance for the, from the board, now that we have the executed agreement from First American, we can work on tweaking that signage because before we were kind of blocked in a little bit on what, what that signage could look like. So once we have the guidance from the board of, are we utilizing this for business and commuter, what's going to be our allocation? Then we can look at doing appropriate signage so that it's clear to, to businesses or whomever that this is allocated for business or business employee parking or what have you.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to be clear.
So the question is whether we want these one, two, three, four, five, six, seven spots on the east side to be utilized for commuter or for business. Do I have that correct? We don't have a choice on the, the six spots that are facing the railroad tracks because those are commuter spots.
You have a choice on those as well.
We have the choice on those as well, okay?
But also how long the spots will be open for, if it's two hours max? And what can we offer in the way of business, business parking permits for employees? I believe that we have those permits for Burlington residents, I mean Burlington employees.
Well, that's for anybody that isn't within the business district that doesn't have onsite parking. It's, you know, so whether they're on East Avenue or East Burlington or Quincy, they can utilize that space. Now granted, it is a walk to get, if you're on East Burlington, or, I'm sorry, East Quincy, to get from the business parking, but it's all along the BNSF.
Okay, yeah, I'm not sure that they understand that. So, okay, I'll pass it on.
Actually, following up on your last point, I agree with what you've raised. I had, when I was talking to Jennifer, she mentioned something in her personal capacity because she used to rent an office in the arcade and now she's down on Quincy, that the walk over the tracks is burdensome for those people who have their businesses on the south side of the tracks. So it's, it is really not convenient. And then to have a two-hour parking limit, to Kristen's point, on the south side of the tracks, where you get a ticket for fifty bucks every time you exceed the two-hour limit, is, it is burdensome for them. So, you know, it, it's a reasonable and fair point that I think we should consider for, for the business owners that are on, or, you know, operators on that side of the tracks to, to provide something or extend that two-hour limit so it's not quite so difficult for them.
And so my question is, is twofold of how, how far down, whether, so let's use East Quincy for example. How far down East Quincy are we going to allow longer parking? Because obviously it involves residential, and so we don't want to negatively impact those residents. If we allocate some of these parking spots to, for business, similar to the East Burlington, it's kind of first come, first served. And so it could be that, which is fine, certain individuals will be able to park in the premium spots and they may be taken. And so therefore, those that are patronizing the businesses on East Quincy have on-street parking or then the customers have to search. So I think that way back, and this predates me, when the board had allocated all those parking spots on, down on East Burlington along the BNSF line, it was really to say, we want our business, our business employees to park in these spaces because we want to keep all the other parking lot spaces freed up for the patrons to come to make it as convenient for them as possible. So just kind of giving a little bit of background as it relates to that. Obviously, whatever the board decides, we will definitely execute, but I just figured it would be helpful to have a little bit of that background and just being aware of not impacting, trying not to impact the residential by having a lot of business parking along their street, too, for extended periods of time.
Maybe we could consider like an annual sticker of some sort with a fee for business parking in the future.
I don't know if I understand what you're, we have a sticker now for business parking.
Right. She's, she's asking for, it's for down East Quincy for on-street.
Oh, is that how it's set up?
It's currently, yes. So we, we notify businesses, we reach out to businesses on the parking that's available along East Burlington. We provide, it's free of charge. So we just take the information on the plate numbers. They're just required to park in those spaces along the, the BNSF. And so if we switch that to do something with on-street, it's just trying to figure out how we navigate that because I assume, I, I don't know how many tenants are within the arcade building or employees, but I just want to be very cognizant of the fact of not negatively impacting the residential.
Well, you're also going to negatively impact the businesses in a way if, if all the employees are now parking
Yeah.
around, you know, around the arcade building, then, then I can't get my coffee in the morning.
Well, yeah, I wouldn't be proposing that we need to give twenty permits to employees. I'm just bringing it up as a point that was mentioned and it kind of seems like an equity issue on the, on each side of the track, like on the south side of the tracks. But, but I do think that once the parking lot, Lot Eight is done, it's going to look really nice and it's really going to enhance and maybe.
Well, we haven't gotten any grants yet.
I know. If we get, you know, if we get the grant, it's really going to look nice. And it's really going to enhance the area. So I just, and I also just wanted to make sure that we're going to get the parking correct, parking right.
So I don't think we come to any conclusion here. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, thirteen spots?
Twelve.
Twelve spots? How many, what do we want to do with them? Do we allocate them for, for commuter? And we have twenty-two people on the waiting list for those spots. So potentially, you know, those twenty-two may, may, may or may not be still there. I know the department guy has been asking for parking spots. Yes, Doug?
What do we, what, what am I missing? What, why do we have to pick? Why can't we just say to the commuters and the businesses, we have these spaces available? I know commuters, it's limited. We have to charge them a certain amount. But we could at the same time ask the businesses, would you like?
To buy a spot?
To buy a spot.
Okay. Well, that's different because we don't, right now, we provide it along the rail line for free. So we don't, we don't charge for employees.
And they could, they can go there if they wish.
What's that?
And they can go on the other side if they wish for free.
But picking one or the other, we may end up with, probably not, but we could end up with spaces that no one.
Nobody wants.
Nobody wants. So why not just offer them first come, first served? And I would, I would inform the businesses first since the commuters are already aware and on the list.
If they were opened up for quarterly commuter spots, those spots are available for commuters Monday through Friday, except for holidays from, I believe, seven AM to six PM. There's nothing preventing a business owner from buying those spots, but our practice has to, has been to go through the waitlist process. So it would be first offered to number one on the waitlist.
And then the businesses would be able to use those spots for free after six o'clock, correct?
Or on the weekends.
Correct, or on the weekends.
Which.
I think the signage can be improved to identify that the spots are open for use during non-commuter hours.
But some businesses would like parking starting at four. For customers.
I don't, I can't answer the question. We only have so many spots. So. So, I, I get where, I get what you're saying. And, you know, Riverside is, you know, I, I, I go over there and I have, never have a problem finding a place to park either on Quincy or, 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 you know, along the front of the, there's plenty of parking spots.
And also, isn't the Park District building, isn't that public parking as well?
That's, that's...
Parks and Rec, so it's, it is utilized for Parks and Rec. Obviously, if there aren't any classes going on, then there would be the coordination of utilizing the lot. And I've talked to, we've, I've talked informally with Derek, it was a while ago, but with regard to that, because obviously the challenge for him is trying to figure out his tours and coordinating that, but if there's no programming and the parking lots available. But to your point, Trustee Evans getting some better signage for that lot saying public parking and stuff, for not only that, but also for the other spots if that's what we choose to do. Even if we don't choose to utilize those spots, we can still have a nice Village of Riverside sign with a logo saying Saturday parking available from this time to this time and kind of at each points of access along Lot Eight, so that people know that they can park there.
All day Saturday.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
All right, so how about if we do, in the back row, the slanted slots, so five will go to the bank and...
Talking about the east, the east row, right?
No, I'm talking about the ones along the track where it's slanted.
Spots 20 through 25?
Yes, yes, actually, yeah, I'm talking about, yeah, maybe like 20 through 24 or maybe 21 through 25 and open 20 for a commuter.
But those, those are the, those are the prime commuter spots.
Well, those, that's where I want to put the bank spots because I, we should keep this, which ones are we gonna offer patrons? I don't see why it like, it seems kind of odd that we're putting the bank, giving the bank those primo spots that are right in front of the businesses that need, that are requesting more parking.
Okay, well, you could take the, if you, I mean, if that's your point, then take the five spots and move them down to the other side and just move the commuter parking over, but, but we want to leave the primo spot. I wouldn't think we'd want to leave the primo spots for, for the, those, those train spots for the train.
All right.
Correct? Yes, Doug?
Yeah, are you, is your thinking that someone would, would turn down a space that's 40 feet away?
I, that's...
They'd say, no, I'm not interested anymore because I have to walk 30 feet.
Director Johns may have some additional...
I understand it's more desirable, but does it really affect the renting of it?
We'll say in Lot Eight, I have 22 people on the waitlist and in Lot One, which is just a little bit longer walk to get on the train, I have vacancies.
It is desirable because especially, I believe in the winter, they wait in their car for the train, then...
That's why we need the extension, the platform extension.
Right, I, personally, I think these are the primo, these are the primo spots and we should be, we should be using these for commuters. That's, that's my feeling.
I, I actually agree with both of you, so I think, I, I, but a little different interpretation on Kristen's point. So, I agree that spots 20 through 25 are the most desirable for the commuters who are gonna hop on the platform there, so they should have those spots. But I also agree with Trustee Evans in that spots 33 through 37, which are currently designated as the bank spots, it might behoove the business owners on Quincy, like, you know, the distillery and the art center and, and the auto place, for those spots to be available for, you know, customers instead. So, perhaps moving the bank's designated parking further back, like 32 through whatever, 32 through 26 somewhere in there might be a good compromise.
I, I get what you're saying, but are we still gonna, are we gonna use them for commuters? Are we gonna, are we gonna use them for, just allow them to be open for, for...
No, I have...
For businesses.
I can, I don't know if we need to make a motion, but should I or do I just tell you what I think we should do? So, the, the slanted some spots along the train, those should go to commuters.
Okay.
And then we just switch the bank spots from 33 to six, to 37, back to 26 through 30. And then 31 through 37 would be patron parking.
Would it be patron parking or business parking? The business parking is for employees only that are issued a business parking sticker versus open parking, which would have some sort of minimum amount of hours parked.
Well, there's no, there are no assigned permit, business permit spots, are there on the, on the Burlington side? Do you just give them a sticker or...
It's designated, so all those spots are designated as employee parking spots with the permitting. So, my initial inclination is that they will, if we're saying we're gonna leave it open for either employee or visitor to the business, it's probably gonna be taken out by the employees.
Exactly.
I guess that would be their decision. That's, there's, those, that's kind of gonna be like an area that we're providing or we're planning for them to use and if they want to use them all for, for employees versus their customers, I guess that would be...
That's not gonna solve your, your, just, let's just think about the, the distillery. It's not gonna solve his problem because what's gonna happen is he, he doesn't open until 3:00. All the spots are gonna be taken by people that get there earlier. So, it's not gonna solve, I don't think it'll solve the problem. Go ahead.
Uh, well, if we charged like a quarterly fee for the spot, then the business could choose to use it for their employee parking or choose to use it for their customer. So, Quincy Street Distillery could say, I'd like to buy spots 36 and 37...
Yeah, the way the bank did.
For the quarter and see how it goes for me. And then they could either park there themselves or they could move their car if they knew they had tours coming in.
Right, or, or they can get a sign that says parking for the distillery only.
Right, sure. They, they could do that too.
The same way that the bank does.
But if we sold those spots on a quarterly basis, then the businesses who purchased them could decide how they wanted to use them, whether they wanted to use them for employee or for customer parking.
Go ahead, Karen?
My only concern with that option is enforcement. Right now, for enforcement for business parking, we look for the, the sticker in the back window if someone was parking in a distillery only spot. I don't believe we'd be able to identify them as a patron of the distillery and how that would work out in the end as far as enforcement. Unless we had them put stickers in their window or to hand out their, their customer a parking pass to be able to park there.
Mm-hmm. I don't know, just, just tossing ideas out.
I would, I, I think where we get to the spot is that if we wanted, but the, the thing is, is you're telling me that if we turn those spots into business lease spots, we don't have to offer them first to those 22 people on the list because these aren't commuter spots, these are business lease spots. So, we can make that distinction by taking six of these spots and turning them into business lease spots, offer them to the businesses where they can either lease them or, or, and if they want to lease them, they lease them for a, a rate. Those are their spots. And then you can go to your 22 people and give them a chance to get the six spots because those are technically commuters. We don't have to make these commuter spots.
We don't need to make them commuter spots. We would have to create a new class in the fee structure in the village code to, because right now we only have 24-hour spots, metered spots, commuter spots and business parking spots, which are free spots. So, we'd have to come up with a new classification and fee schedule for that.
Which is kind of what we're thinking about, I mean, if I, if I, thinking correctly back on our discussion at the 3220 property or 30 through 20, we're actually talking about some of those being business lease spots also.
How I interpreted that was we were allocating just spots for businesses, for, for visitors. So...
So, they would be hourly parking.
So, they would be free, similar to in the central business district because there's no parking.
But there'd be hourly, I mean, you couldn't stay there for more than two hours.
Correct, so it would be limited on time.
Okay, I, I, I mean, we can do that to these spots too. I mean, that's back to the, the same thing is we, you know, if you, you have an employee, the employee, we have parking on the other side. Granted, that's not the most, you have to walk. But these spots can either be, these could be business spots, but they, they're two-hour, they're metered spots.
They could be two-hour parking spots or four-hour parking spots. They could also be metered spots. During the Lot One reconstruction, we had metered spots in that area, which were very popular and heavily used and there was no meter within walking distance, but people paid via the app or online for those spots on an hourly basis.
I think that's a great option.
Maybe that strikes the balance of the, the business owners.
Yeah, because the meat, nobody uses, nobody has money anymore. The app, you do?
Uh, well, I, I just, that's fine, I, we should wrap this up, but this discussion, I'm fine with that. But I've just gotta say that if we have empty commuter spaces elsewhere, I don't know why we would prioritize six commuter spots here.
Because they don't, they're better.
Slightly.
Well, none of you, that's where you get picked up by the...
Obviously, the people who want them don't want them that bad because they'd go and lease over Lot One, but forget I said that, let's...
Okay, do you have enough? So, we're gonna, the, I, I believe the consensus is the six along the tracks could be commuter spots.
Okay, quarterly commuter spots.
Quarterly commuter spots that the eastbound, uh, spots are gonna...
26 through 30.
Are gonna be flipped, so the bank will get the first five rather than the last five, and the balance of the spots will be used for metered parking.
And similar to Lot One, metered parking is free on nights and weekends, so we will make sure that signage is clear on that effect for businesses operating in the evenings and weekends.
Correct, and I would think we'd want to, that same app or that same theory would be 30 through 20? Am I, am I backing things up again or...
Um, if we're saying that we want to do, instead of doing business parking, that we'll do commuter and then just metered parking, the board is supportive of that?
So, we keep all the parking, the parking license, okay? There we go. See?
Wait, 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 can I ask a question? So, why are we doing the metered? Is it just to accommodate the, the business, the business, like the employees?
And the businesses and the patrons?
That's the only reason?
I mean, that, you know, if you're going, you have, there's seven spots there, you can, you know, if it's open, you can, you can park there.
And the other option is just giving them two hours?
Or three, depending on what the board would, would like.
Which is what the rest of the village has?
In the central business district, I believe the timeframe is for three hours. It used to be two in certain lots and we streamlined it for three-hour time limit in the different parking lots.
Um, yeah, I just don't, it just seems like unfair that we're putting meters in this, just this one little section of the village. But if it's to mainly accommodate employees, I'm not sure this is what they had in mind.
It's better than a $50 ticket every so often.
Yeah, and, and there's, 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 it's not like there's, it's a desert, I mean, there's parking, there's parking on the street, I mean, there's, there's parking. I mean, I, I never have a problem finding parking, but I think we need to, we need to, we need to A, move on and B, gather revenue where we can. And these are, these are, these are important spots, so. Everybody okay?
Yeah.
Perfect.
So, just to clarify, consensus is we're gonna do some commuter over at 3320, some metered as well, and then based on the outline previously provided with the different parking spots designated, some will be commuter, we will work with Bank of America, or First American, I'm sorry, for 30, 26 through 30 parking lot spots and the remainder will be metered and we will work on numbering those and working with the app to get that up and running.
Perfect, thank you.
Sure.
Last on our agenda is the trustee reports and communications. Do any trustees have any reports? Yes?
I do, I have an item of special interest. I'd like to recognize a Riverside resident, RBHS senior and homegrown athlete, Sarah Wood. In February, Ms. Wood participated at the Illinois State Powerlifting Championships. She set a state deadlift record for women in her weight class, achieving a deadlift of 336 pounds. And I'd just like to congratulate Ms. Wood on her success, on acting as a role model for young women and representing our village well.
Thank you. Alex, would you like to say something?
I would. So, Alliance Club has asked me to, in front of the public, there are two things. One, there's a clothing drive for suits for success, which helps people transition back to the workforce, so those who have professional clothing can drop that off next Tuesday, I believe it's April 12th, at Connie's by 6:00 PM. The other one is they have named a recipient of the Bill Janzki Distinguished Citizen Award. That person is Ray Navarro, who has done an outstanding number of things over decades for our community. Those who wish to be present when he is honored should contact Alliance Club. That presentation will be May 10th, which is a Tuesday. And again, just, just congratulations again to Ray Navarro and that's all I have for today, sir.
Is May, is that a, a afternoon meeting or a...
It's an evening meeting at 6:00.
Thank you. Everybody?
All right. I've been contacted by a number of different groups this month. There's so much going on in Riverside in April. I will be brief as I can. All right, so April's National Poetry Month. The Olmstead Society is accepting entries for its Reflections on Riverside Student Poetry Contest, open to students in first through 12th grades in all Riverside area schools, which is encompassed by the District 208 boundaries. Next, this Saturday, Big Ballpark is the place to be. At 9:00 AM, there's a landscape workday that begins there and at 10:00, you can bring the kiddies and come to an Easter egg hunt. So, Parks and Rec is sponsoring that, beginning at 10:00. It's going to be a beautiful day. Next Saturday, the 16th, the River Rats are doing a cleanup in the Forest Preserve just east of Berry Point Bridge and Hoffman Tower. Meet with your work gloves, et cetera. The following Saturday, the 23rd, is the Olmstead Overlook Planting, beginning at 9:00 AM. They will meet on Fairbank Road on the Bluff just east of the Berry Point Bridge to plant the Olmstead Overlook. Later that same afternoon, the juniors are doing their Brew Fest at the Swim Club, so you can decompress after your wonderful planting day. $70, you can get the tickets through Cheddar Up and that will be at the Swim Club. Then that Tuesday, April 26th, is Frederick Law Olmstead's birthday, reminding everyone once again about the Historical Commission's birthday party for Olmstead that will be at the train station from 4:00 to 6:00. And then at 7:00 to 9:00 later that evening will be the presentation of the Olmstead 200 Gifts to the Community, taking place at the Riverside Public Library. The last Saturday of the month, the 30th, the Olmstead Society will be doing a workday in Indian Gardens and this will involve the planting of the village's Arbor Day tree also. Later that afternoon, the Riverside Rocks Group is doing a 2022 Spring Fling in Riverside, which will benefit St. Jude's and the Cameron Can Foundation. Those tickets are $25 and you will get a map to go see all kinds of awesome bands that will be performing around Riverside. So, really, spring has sprung or is in the process of springing right now and April's gonna be terrific, so be on the lookout for all of those great events.
Things are happening. Things are happening.
Um, Trustee Marshoska stole my thunder on the Easter egg hunt news, but I do want to add that if you bring a picture, bring a camera, you can get a picture with your kids and Easter bunny and look for the golden ticket in any of your eggs for a $25 gift certificate for Parks and Rec programming. I also wanted to note that Director Malkiati has been working with Riverside Garage to bring back cruise nights and the car show this year, so we can look forward to that this summer.
Great. It'll be a busy summer. Okay? Thank you. We have no need for an executive session this evening, so I... We have no need for an executive session this evening, so I'd ask for a motion and a second to adjourn.
Motion made.
Motion by Trustee Galagos, second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Marshazga. Ethan, if you would please?
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.